Good evening. I'd like to call the February 12th, 2024 meeting of the Dare County Board of Education to order. We're meeting at the Dare County Administrative Building in Manioe and the time is 5:07. Before we begin, I'd like to request a moment of silence. Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Bassnight here tonight as our county commissioner. Thank you so much for attending our meeting and certainly you and the other commissioners their support in our schools. It's very, very nice and glad to see you tonight. I'll turn the meeting over to our vice chair, Mr. Woody.
Good evening. I just want to thank everybody that's here and those that are watching online. Before we get started, I just would like to give a big thanks to the County Board of Commissioners for approving the funding for the Early College. I'm super excited about that. With that, we'll go Ms. Isabella.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will need to have approval to amend the agenda, to add an update on AI. Do I have a motion on the floor to amend the agenda to add a report on AI? Have a motion, Susan, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Payne. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, do I have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda? Have a motion on the floor, Mr. Payne. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Payne. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hitch for our public comment.
From the public during its regularly scheduled meetings, the public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, complaints about the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, or the quality of education program or school facilities. According to Policy 2340, presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. Obscene, vulgar, or profane statements, personal attacks, and insults in statements that are disruptive to the orderly operation of the meeting will not be permitted. I have only one public comment sign up, and it is Denise Fallon.
Agenda again to share some pretty amazing information, so that's why I signed up for the public comment section. So it's that time of year when we're starting to look to next year as students plan to take some of those college courses at COA through the Career and College Promise Program. And with that, I'd like to share with you some of our results from students and their coursework from the fall. So I have some data to share, and it's pretty exciting. So from Cape Harris Secondary School, students took 114 courses. Ninety-two percent of them, students received an A, B, or a C. And so that's transferable college credit. For Manioe High School, 139 courses were taken. Eighty-six percent of those were in the A, B, or C range, and again, that's transferable college credit for students. At First Flight High School, students took 300 courses with 93% of those in the A, B, or C range, with 82% of those being an A or a B. So I'm really excited about those numbers. It seems that students are taking advantage of those opportunities and performing very well in that college environment. So we're excited about that. If anybody out there in the public is listening, if you don't know what we're talking about with CCP, please reach out to the high school. The advisors can share that information with you. We also have a liaison that works here for the district, John Hunting, and he can share information as well. We'll be doing registration during the month of March, and students can enroll in college courses and make some selections for their high school courses as well. So really exciting information from the world of CCP here in Dare County. So that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Great information. Thank you, Ms. Fallon.
We'll now move on to announcements and recognitions. February has been a big month for celebrations and events in our schools. There are a few that I would like to mention tonight. Last week, it was School Council Week. School counselors play a critical role in the academics and emotion well-being of our students. They work with other educators and community service providers to meet the needs of our students. They also are a great resource for our parents and our staff. February also recognized the National Career Technical Education Month. CTE provides students with unique real-life experience as well as preparing students for the academics, direction, and career-related knowledge to help them plan studies in the line with their interests, abilities, and career goals for the future. Last year, our CTE programs set an all-time record in CTE student involvement, number of industrial accreditation earned points, and also career pathways completion. So currently, in the CTE enrollment, we have 2,798 students, and that's six through 12. To date, the number of industry credentials earned is 1,362. So wonderful job to our CTE.
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible that we have some of our CTE staff here tonight? Would it be possible for them to come up and get a photo with the board?
I would love that.
Thank you.
Please come on up. If we could, go right down front, please.
Those are some pretty impressive numbers, folks. Thank you. Please keep it up.
In February, we also honored Black History Month. This year, the theme is African Americans and the Arts. The Dare County Board of Education celebrates the accomplishments of our African-American community and is proud to recognize Black History Month in our Dare County schools. Last but not least is Love the Bus. Love the Bus was dedicated to show off appreciation for our school bus drivers, industry, and the individuals involved in the operation of school buses, including our drivers. This started in February of 2007, and every year since then, the month of February has been Love the Bus. Our transportation staff, drivers and monitors, work tirelessly to provide our students with the safest means of transportation as possible. I'd like to thank all of our school counselors, our CTE and transportation staff, and always, the Board of Education is proud of every employee that we currently have. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bassnight for some other further recommendations and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could ask the board members to sort of gather in the middle of the podium up here. I have a presentation to the board as a whole first. Yep, right there. Let me read this, and I'll join you. The Dare County Board of Education has received the Gold Bell Award for whole-board training. Dare County Board of Education and Dare County Schools for training excellence and commitment during the 2223 North Carolina School Board Association Academic Year of the North Carolina School Boards Association Academic Boardsmanship. Congratulations.
Hey, this is a meeting I miss.
For my second presentation tonight, I'm going to ask a couple of our board members, if you would, come down front for this one. The North Carolina School Boards Association strives to offer board members up-to-date and relevant educational training opportunities. Each academic year runs from July 1 through June 30. Board members must earn a minimum of 30 hours of training annually, as approved by the local board and reviewed by the North Carolina School Boards Association. Once this minimum requirement has been met, annual recognition will be given. If a board member chooses not to participate in activities or has less than required number of hours of training for the current academic year, that member's previous achievement level is not penalized. We have three board members tonight that we want to recognize for their achievement. First of all, having achieved a minimum of 31 hours of training, we were proud to recognize Ms. Susan Bothwell with a certificate of merit. Second, with a minimum of 101 hours of training, we're proud to recognize Board Chairman David Twitty and Member Mary Alon Balance with a certificate of achievement. If y'all would come down front for photos, please.
Susan, pull up a picture on your phone.
Ms. Balance, I held yours.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Finally, for tonight's notifications, I'm extremely pleased to notify the board and our public that we have received a substantial grant and really want to thank Dr. Shannon Castillo for her hard work and diligence on making this happen. Several years ago, Dare County Schools applied for a school safety grant with North Carolina Safe Schools, and we received that grant, and it has been used primarily for notification and communication in our schools, and that grant has been exhausted. Last November, Dr. Castillo and I met and started talking about the possibility of applying for an additional safety grant to target some specific needs in our buildings that we are excited to have the opportunity for. We wrote our grant with a little lofty goal. It was for a total of $475,000 and hoping we would get some of it. We were notified a couple weeks ago that we did receive a $300,000 school safety grant from North Carolina Safe Schools, and we have some specific areas that we want to target with that funding, and we'll be doing a presentation next month to the board about that funding. But I did want to notify the board that we had received that. We can either vote tonight in new business to accept that, or you can wait till next month to accept that $300,000. However you want to do that.
What's the pleasure, the board? Would you like to wait tonight, or do you want to... Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we amend the agenda to allow for, excuse me, acceptance of the grant as proposed by Mr. Bassnight.
So we have a motion by Mr. Brower, second by Mr. Payne. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're excited. Thank you too, Dr. Castillo.
Shannon, thank you so much.
And next on the agenda are our student advisors.
So first, with Kitty Hawk Elementary School. Kitty Hawk Elementary School students sang, danced, and learned about habitats at a Nature Out Loud assembly. The Kitty Hawk Elementary specials teachers are busy planning Global Culture Day in February, highlighting the traditions and stories about Germany. This week, Kitty Hawk Elementary students are showing appreciation to their kind and hard-working bus drivers during the Love the Bus Week. For First Flight Elementary School, the FFEES Math Night at Pelix on January 24th was a huge success. We had 25% of our families attend, and it was a great way for us to build relationships with our students and their families. It was so fun to see our parents working alongside their students. We also had a huge representation from our staff at Math Night. On February 6, 7, and 8, all classrooms, EC, interventionists, specialists, admin, and ESL teachers participated in our first day-to-day. This allowed for grade levels and collaboration with specialists and interventionists to have three hours to look over middle-of-the-year data to create a plan for the next round of interventions and supports during flyer time and during classroom interventions. Collington Pizza donated lunch to all of our staff for day-to-days. We really appreciate all this community support. For First Flight Middle School, the first month, First Flight Middle School has two events we'd like to highlight. On February 19, we are holding student-like conferences facilitated by their teachers. Over the last few months, students have created SMART goals reflected on their performance in each class, selected work samples, and written letters to their parents or guardians to share with them during the conferences. We are excited to welcome so many families to school that day. In addition, on February 28, we have two speakers from the State Bureau of Investigation visiting our campus. They will speak to each grade level during their exploratory classes about internet, safety, digital evidence, cybercrimes, how to use social media appropriately, and how to be a positive digital citizen. After speaking to our students, they will hold a table talk with their parents to help them understand what dangers are out there and how they can help their students be safe on the internet. For First Flight High School, congrats to our wrestling team who won the regional individual team championship. Congrats to Kayla Folks, who won the indoor track state championship in the 1,000-meter race, and congrats to Gray Miller for an outstanding performance in the state diving competition, where he secured an impressive third place. Our boys and girls basketball teams continue to win, with our boys currently tied for first place in the conference, and our girls have moved to a 14-3 record. It's also senior night tonight for the basketball team, so if y'all can make it, you should try. Congrats to all of our teams. Next, we have continued to celebrate Black History Month, and students also had the opportunity to participate in CTE Month by dressing for their future profession. Shout out to Mr. Wallen and all of our CTE teachers who continue to do a tremendous job for our scholars here at First Flight High School. Last week was also Counselor Appreciation Week, and we are so grateful for the work our school counselors do daily with and for our students. Thank you, Ms. Garrett, Ms. Wheelis, and Ms. White, and also thank you to Ms. Wheelis, Ms. Ledbetter, Ms. Bailey, and Mr. Hampf, and all the other helpers for the wonderful scholarship workshop on Thursday. Go Nighthawks. Thank you, guys.
Hi, everyone. At, we're going to start with Manioe Elementary School. At Manioe Elementary, we were so excited to roll out our Campus Spirit shirts to every child. Each grade level has a color that matches with their spirit, kindness level strip, and now every kid can wear the shirt with joy. Not to mention, when grade levels meet their goals, all the kids in that grade wear the shirt, and it really enhances the school culture. Additionally, MMS hosted an OBX Chamber Tool this week, where we were able to highlight classroom transformations which support a Dare Education Foundation grant that was recently funded in January. Professional development is crucial for our teachers, and we have a team of 12 of us attending a national conference from Get Your Tech On, Get Your Teach On, where we will go learn as a family and look at ways to bring back these latest best practices with our colleagues across the building. Lastly, we are in the planning phase of kicking off a school-wide transformation for our One Book One School, where we will be making over Manioe Elementary School so that the inside resembles the planet Mars in support of our school-wide book, A Rover's Story. It's a little small for my vision. MMS had a wonderful visit by the Chamber of Commerce. They were able to see our tomahawk time in action. A team of seventh graders prepared and participated in the AMC8 math competition. Several of them scored over the national average. Thank you to Mr. Vrabelik for your hard work in getting the math students prepared. MMS band students participated in the all-district band competition and made fourth district concert band. Ben Zad Clarinet, Naomi Wheeler Tuba, Reed Katson, the timpani, I'm not very good with them. I don't have a lot of knowledge, but Lucas Bailey Trumpet. MMS is also participating in One Book One School. Students and staff are reading Ghost. Finally, MMS boys' basketball team are undefeated conference champs with an amazing 14-0 record. At Manioe High School, we were able to highlight some of the programs during last week's OBX Chamber of Commerce visit, but more importantly, our schools had an important opportunity to have conversations with the community's leaders. Our winter sports team is wrapping up with indoor track, wrestling, and swim qualifying for regional and state competitions. Spring sports also start this week. Six students were selected for the all-district band at Manioe High School, and the staff is providing support to our junior students in preparation for the upcoming ACT. With a question of the day remediation during IT after school and even on weekends, we began sign-ups for COA. We began COA sign-ups last week, and will continue to do that this week. Thank you.
Isabella, could you step back over there? There was something you forgot to tell the board, I think. Some award or finished...
Award?
Did you get some award or recognition recently?
Not that I can think of.
Swimming?
Oh, yes.
Yes. What was that?
We went to states.
Uh-huh. You did very well, too.
We did. As a team, overall, we did very well.
Absolutely.
Yes, that was fun. That was always a good time.
Nothing like putting her on the spot, huh?
Hi. Hold on. Okay. Starting at Cape Harris Elementary School, Friday, February 2, CHES was so excited to host the UNC Morehead Mobile Planetarium. The Morehead Mobile Planetarium shows are an exciting way to engage and inspire students with a love of science. Our fourth and fifth grade students were invited to an inflatable dome with the sights, sounds, and sensations of an extraordinary educational adventure. The program included a planetarium show, a question-and-answer session with the Morehead educator, and a short educational video. In other exciting news, the CHES Media Center is excited to partner with Hubble and share the love of reading with students in micro-nnesia. Eleven boxes of used picture books are headed to a school in Yap. The donation will help set up their first dedicated library. Cape Harris Secondary School is currently working with all juniors in preparation for the upcoming ACT. As part of our College, Career, and Life Skills Initiative, the library held our first How to Do Your Taxes workshop. The workshop gave students an overview of what taxes are, as well as walked them through a simulation on how to file taxes. Gretchen Altman represented CHSS in the North Carolina Eastern Honors Band at ECU earlier this month and did an outstanding job. Finally, CHSS will be honoring Coach Earl Fountain on Thursday for 30 years of coaching service to our school. Coach Earl will be missed. Dare Learning Academy is excited to have to have to have six students meet all graduation requirements and graduate as mid-year graduates. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to take a short recess, and we'll be back in about five minutes. Agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda? Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Before you take any votes, I want to make sure she can record it.
She's always here. I just assumed she was... I apologize. You're fine, sweetheart.
I thought she lived here.
Like I say, she's always here, so I just naturally assumed she was sitting right there.
Nothing happens without Georgia.
That is correct. That is correct. You ready? So, do I have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda?
No, should we approve the consent agenda?
Motion by Mary Lynn, second by Ms. Popwell. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Mary Lynn, I didn't hear you that time.
No, I'm not opposed, I'm in favor.
Okay. The motion carries. We have someone that's reached out saying they're getting an echo on the. They fixed it? Thank you. Next is reports and items for information, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Balance for a policy committee update.
Thank you, David. Yes, we, the policy committee met and we went over quite a few policies. Rachel, if you want to have anything to add, please feel free to jump in, but basically the meeting started with Rachel giving us a little update on how, where we come up with our policies. I also asked her if moving forward, when we do look at these policies, that anything, any of the policies that we're looking at, if they're affiliated or associated with the Parents' Bill of Rights Act, that she, you know, let us know that as we're looking at them so that we're mindful of the new laws that are coming in from the General Assembly. We do have some policies that we are going to look at tonight, in unfinished business and in new business, and I will add to that at that point. But yeah, I think it's going to be great moving forward. We had a lot of good discussion. So I think it's definitely feel like it gives, taking that extra time to go through them is definitely going to, you know, help us better, you know, put together policies that the superintendent can handle and that we're in agreement with, so it's going to be a good committee moving forward.
Ms. Balance, thank you so much. I appreciate the update on that. Next, I'll turn it over to Mr. Brower, which will give us an update on our capital improvement plan.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. The Capital Improvements Planning Committee met on the 5th, a week ago today. In attendance were myself, Ron Payne, Mary Lynn, Steve Bassnight, Steve Blackstock, Anna McGinnis, and Ian Adams. The five-year capital improvement plan projections are ongoing, so we reviewed where we were as far as that date and time. There's still a lot of work to do. The committee plans to reconvene the first week of March to review the final projections, at which point we'll present a draft to the BOE for the March meeting. And at that point, we can address specific expenditures, budgetary items, and we should be able to have it all approved by April.
I appreciate it, Mr. Brower, and thanks for the committee's hard work. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bassnight now.
While we're waiting, I apologize. Technology. I did want to highlight that our, the school safety grant that we received is one, falls under one of our areas of focus with the DARE County Schools, and that is increasing school security and providing that security in as many ways as we can. There's no magic way to do this. It's going to involve layers, and that's what we're trying to do. We've been working on developing our relationship with the local law enforcement, and that's going very well, and got great support from our local law agencies. So looking forward to continuing to grow our abilities and protect our students and staff. Okay, back me up. Okay, starting with our areas of focus that I was just talking about, go ahead and click those, Holly. Increase student learning and doing, school security, recruitment and retention of qualified staff, and increase high-quality professional development. And that's one of the points I want to emphasize. Now, having said that, I'm not going to try to list all the district staff development we do. As a matter of fact, if you look at the asterisk at the bottom, we begin every school year with a specific, and if you've been to DARE County Schools any length of time, there's a list of things that you have to cover that deal with our policies and procedures at the beginning of the school year. I'm not going to delve into all that, I will touch on some of the bigger things that we emphasized this year, but suffice it to say, this is not the totality of all the professional development we do. Okay, Holly? Go ahead. We've changed our process a little bit this year. We changed that process because of our belief that one size does not fit all. What we're trying to do is we're trying to give professional development that's specifically tied to individual school improvement plans. And that's not necessarily at the district level, that's what the school identifies. And on top of that, we have teachers that develop their own professional development plans, or PDPs, so they deserve the opportunity to have staff development opportunities at their school that also allow them to pursue their own professional development. So we believe that principals are more closely tied to that professional development. And as a result of that, Steve Blackstock, Anna McGinnis, and I sat down and talked about a way to really take our, the district-held professional development funding and provide it to each school so that the principals and the school improvement teams could tailor that funding to exactly what each school needs. So what we did was we allocated to each of the schools a base rate of $5,000 of our school improvement funding. And then we gave them an additional rate based on $10 per student that attends that school. So the larger schools got a little more money, and the smaller schools got a little less. So each school has professional development funding, and then we have additional professional development funding at the district level as well, if somebody goes over or needs additional funding, or if the district wants to provide something, for example, like we did at the beginning of the year. Okay, Holly? Okay? Our desire is for our principals to be recognized as instructional leaders in their building. And to do that, we have to put them in a role to be that instructional leader. If we dictate everything that goes on in the buildings, they don't have that opportunity. So what we do at a district level is we meet in our district leadership with our, all of our directors at central office, as well as all of our building principals, once a month, and then the following week, we meet with our assistant principals. And we provide them with professional development, topics that may be current, things that we need them to take back to their schools. And in doing that, we model opportunities for them to present that professional development and provide them with any PowerPoint or any presentations that we do at those monthly district meetings, so they literally can go back to their schools and replicate that professional development for their staff if it applies to their buildings, or if it's required professional development based on law or requirements or policy. All right. Two of the areas of focus that I want to talk about today, increased student learning. Remember, at the beginning of the year, we did convocation, but I also want to stress that our elementary schools have been in a two-year training. 148 total hours, I believe, is what they've had to participate in over two years. And it's been intensive, it's a lot of work. And keeping that in mind, we've tried not to put anything else on them as far as professional development for our elementary schools, other than what they were already dealing with, unless it was required by law and that we had to get them up to date based on the law. Based on school security, we've done district rave training for our notification system, as well as reinstituting our concussion protocols at our schools for not only diagnosing concussions, but then returning to learn, so that teachers know how to deal with kids that may have had a concussion and come back into their classrooms and what level of work they're capable of doing. And I'll go back, we use the hashtag all the time, targeted, purposeful, and specific, and that's exactly what we try to do with our professional development. Now, in the next few slides, you may see some information that appears on multiple slides or on both sides of the slides. Typically, that's going to occur because we provided that professional development to a train-the-trainer model, or teach-the-teacher. In other words, you get someone to go get the training, and then they take that training and they bring it back to their buildings. We do it at the district level, and the buildings do it as well. So they provide the professional development for a staff member to go off to training, to Raleigh, to Charlotte, and then bring that professional development back and provide that to the rest of the staff in their buildings as well. I'm proud to say that you're going to see several of these buildings that are actually doing their own book studies. As you know, we did a book study on mindset and innovator's mindset at the very beginning last year, and we handed out those books, the board got copies of those books as well. Several of the schools, based on their individual needs in their schools, have identified other books that they wanted to address that brought something specific that they felt like was needing, was needed in their schools. So they're actually doing book studies in their own schools led by their building principals. Now, I'm not going to read you the next several slides, but there is a slide for every single one of our schools. And what I want to show you in each of these slides, and Holly, give it a second, and then you can just click to the next one, and we will go through the elementary schools, the middle schools, and the high schools. This is specific staff development that the schools are offering to their teachers. This isn't the staff development that we're offering to our administrators at the district level. This is what's taking place and going on within each of our individual schools. And I would wager to say this is not a completely exhaustive list.
Steve? Nope, it's me. Over here.
Oh, sorry.
Did the staff help at all with developing these bullet points?
Oh, absolutely necessary. We reached out to every building administrator and asked them to compile. We used a Google form and sent it out to all of our buildings, and they compiled the list and sent it to me, and then I put it together in each of the slides. So yeah, this was, it was a lot of work on our staff. So, having said that, we're not going to move forward if we're all doing the same thing. We need to move forward based on what each individual school needs, based on the goals and the areas of focus that we provide at the district level. So having said that, and I went back through each one of those things that were provided to us by the building-level administrators and staff. The vast majority, and I'd go as far as 90% of everything you see on there, will fall in one of those areas of focus that we've established for the district. So everybody is working toward the same ends. It's just like in a classroom, we're not all at the same place, so you can't provide the exact same instruction and the same resources to everybody at the same time and expect everybody to get there. We're going to get to the end line, we're going to cross the goal line, but we're going to get there on different paths, and we have different needs. And each staff member, each building, needs those needs supplied in order for us to be successful. Any questions?
Sounds good, Mr. Bassnight.
Thank you. I think I've got the next one, too.
Yes, you do.
Got to put my glasses on for this one. I'm not going to try to click, y'all just, I'll start talking, y'all just keep up with me. As required by law, general statute 115C-316.2, the school mental health support personnel reports. The definition of the report for the purposes of this section says the term "school mental health support personnel" refers to school psychologists, school counselors, school nurses, and school social workers. The reason I'm giving this report tonight is because no later than February 15 of each year, I'm required to report to our local administrative unit the following, those following positions to each of you as a board member. There are two questions that I have to address in this report. Question number one, the total number of each category of school mental health support personnel employed in DARE County Schools. For school psychologists, we have one full-time, fully-certified psychologist, one intern, one part-time, two virtually contracted through parallels learning, and we currently have one position that is unfielded. For our school counselors, we have 15 school counselors currently. School social workers, we have one lead social worker, one fully-licensed additional social worker, and one family liaison that is not licensed as a social worker. We have school nurses, we have one supervisor, and 10 school nurses. The second thing that the law requires me to inform you of is the difference from the previous school year in the total number of each category of school mental health personnel employed in DARE County Schools. If you look at school psychologists, next slide. We had three school psychologists last year and three this year. We had 14 school counselors last year and 15 this year. We had three school social workers last year and three this year, and we had one supervisor and 10 school nurses both last year and this year. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Wait, I got a question.
Go ahead.
How overworked are they? I see this is, I see this as an area where we need more, our kids need more support.
Ms. Balance, I would argue that we would accept any and all additional support for those positions. And I'll say, you know, we've, the school psychologists, we've got the unfielded position. That's a hard position to fill. It's a hard position to get applicants to apply for the position to fill. But I think we're all better off if we had additional resources in this area, both our students and our staff.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I see, Mr. Bassnight, since we amend the agenda, we have a report on artificial intelligence. Is that going to be with you and Ms. Fallon?
Ms. Fallon and Ms. King.
Come on down.
You're the next contestant. Oops, I forgot to put my mute button on.
So, good evening. Ms. Fallon and I have a quick update on DARE County's position with respect to generative AI in the K-12 environment. As you remember, when we visited this in December, this was our timeline for implementation of generative AI. We are very much on schedule. We are very much on schedule. So we have we'll walk through the individual steps in a little bit more detail. But since we met in December, there has been an update from the Department of Public Instruction specific to guidance on generative AI. So I share this slide with you. You'll have access to it later, and it is a comprehensive report from the Office of Digital Teaching and Learning through DPI that actually gives us very specific guidance on how we can encourage and implement the safe use of generative AI with all of our students, K-12. And so we're now that we have this document, we're looking heavily at it to inform any student code of conduct, language, teacher syllabi, language, professional learning, not only for the adults in our space, but also our our youngsters. So with that in mind, let's look at our timeline. So our first timeline checkpoint, which we have actually completed, is step one, establish a foundation. So we created a district team in the fall, and we met, and there we developed our official position. Turns out, our position was very much in line with DPI's anticipated position on the use of generative AI. We hosted introductory meetings for you in December, and then we just hosted our first introductory meeting for leadership at last week's principals and directors meeting. Try it in.
Well, I was just going to say on that two things. First of all, I think Dare County was a little ahead of the curve on this, which it makes me feel really proud and good that some of the work that our team had already done aligned with some of the information that we got from DPI after the fact. So we're a little bit ahead of the game. And just to follow up, but just a little bit about our training last week for principals, we provided principals an opportunity to kind of be informed about what it is, what it looks like, and this is how you can use it, and did a little practice run activity. I was excited that one of the principals emailed both of us later that evening, had gone back to her school immediately to talk to her staff and used generative AI to help make a little piece of her work a little bit easier and has used it a couple of times since. I've actually got a meeting scheduled with our guidance department at First Light High School, and I'm going to invite our other high schools as well on, again, how to use that tool to do some of those tasks that our guidance counselors have to do, which is writing recommendation letters for lots and lots of students. And so you can really use that to personalize that that letter and save some time, too. So we're excited about the and some of our principals share that their teachers are already using some of those resources. So it's really exciting work here in Dare County.
So one of the elements that's listed in step one is to review current ed tech providers and platforms. And I hesitate to say that that's something that we've completed because this is evolving on a daily basis. So rather than say this is completed, this is ongoing. As platforms are available to adults and students, we will continue to review them and vet them for appropriateness. Our second step is to develop our staff. So where we are right, that was scheduled for spring of 2024. We have three professional learnings planned for this month, two for our teachers, and one very specific to target our beginning teachers. And we are also encouraging our principals, ITFs, media coordinators, to provide professional learning in the building based on the specific needs of their staff. And we're providing them with the resources to help them do that. Our current AI academic guidelines are under development, but they will be ready this summer. And then we will continue to support our teachers on the implementation of this come fall of 2024. Step three is to educate our community. That will happen this summer and ongoing with the beginning of year 2024. We will share our guidelines with our community that will include students, parents, and community members. We will make sure that our teachers are well versed in the appropriate use of AI in their classroom, both from an adult perspective as well as from a student perspective. And then we will provide AI literacy training for our students. What does appropriate use look like? And what does inappropriate use look like? And we will continue to provide professional learning for all staff members, from leaders all the way to teaching assistants, on the evolving platforms that are available for them and their students. And then lastly, ongoing, we will continue to assess all of the platforms that are available. We will look at guidance as it evolves from the state, and we will continue to support our staff members. Here's a glimpse into what we provided with professional learning last week for our principals. We gave them a basic definition, and we looked at what is the difference between artificial intelligence versus machine learning into deep learning and now where we are with generative AI? So that gave us a nice platform to make sure that we're using all the same language. We looked at what AI is now and what is anticipated to look like in two to five years. We're slide behind. Aaron's learning canvas is behind. There we go. AI is evolving faster than we anticipate. So we might expect something's going to be on the forefront in five years, and what we're finding is that it's likely here in two. For example, we really didn't anticipate generative images at this point, but we have them. So the next step is generative video. And so while that looked like it was going to be two and a half to three years on the forefront, it's here now. We looked at the conflict. As educators, some of the conflict that we are anticipating is, is school about learning to learn and apply that for real life, or is it about learning information? And that's a mind shift change for our educators and for our students. And so we have to look at where does AI fit into that? Do we lean into ban it? Make it stop? Make it go away? I'm going to ignore it? Or do we lean into, let's take it slow? Let's be intentional? And then let's learn how to use it appropriately, because it's likely that our students are going to see it in their future employment opportunities. With that, we made sure our leaders understood the why. Where is AI showing up at employment opportunities in collegiate environments? And then we spent a little bit of time diving into four very popular platforms. I'll point these out very briefly, although some of our students probably have seen these before. The first one is ChatGPT. We're not allowed to talk about that one, but I tell you what, it's pretty phenomenal, especially the new version, ChatGPT 4.0. The second one is Dipit. That one is a very specific to teacher resources that will take an idea that a teacher has and create digital manipulatives for students to use in the classroom, all the way from vocabulary lists to quiz questions, open-ended questions, and even translate into multiple languages. Magic School will do some of that same thing, but Magic School also has the opportunity for teachers to create rubrics, professional emails, and recommendations for students. And then lastly, Microsoft Copilot. Microsoft Copilot is very robust. That's something that can be used by teachers and students, and it works very similar to ChatGPT. In fact, it has the same information source. We spent a little bit of time teaching the adults in our space how to craft a prompt. So just like a calculator, generative AI is only as great as the prompt that you enter. So we spent a lot of time on the protocol called Craft, teaching our leaders how to really get a robust response by putting in a robust prompt. Ladies, if either of you would like this later, this will help you out tremendously if you're using AI. It is awesome. So we've generated some really great con content as a result of this.
And so for me, when I saw this, I absolutely loved it because as you start to kind of play around with some of those tools, you know, my mind goes back to garbage in, garbage out, and that's how it works. So if you don't prompt with great information, you're not going to get something great back, right? You'll get something okay.
And generative AI is conversational.
Absolutely.
So when you get the response from generative AI, it's important that that conversation is not over there. You were having a conversation with a bot, and you can ask it to, hmm, that's not quite sure. It's not what I was looking for. Can you do this? And the answer is yes, it will do that. And so it actually is an immediate feedback opportunity for learners, students, and adults. We did spend some time with our leaders talking about why AI detectors are problematic. One of the things we pointed out is that Vanderbilt University has actually stepped away from using AI detectors in at the university setting because what they're finding is that they're actually not equitable. They're finding that they could actually write something on paper, put it into an AI generator, and they're finding that it's anywhere between 50 and 60% flagging for AI when they just wrote the paragraph themselves. Secondly, it looks for one of the issues is that AI detectors look for cadences, which are very common in early writers. So if you have someone who is learning to write for the first time, and AI generate or an AI detector is going to pick up that that cadence is likely generated from a computer because it's so systematic, when in reality, it's just an early writer. And so who are our students who are early writers? Those who might have a learning gap? Or those who might be learning language, English, the English language for the first time? So therefore, this this software has a tendency to target those early learners. Lastly, this is a new resource that we'll share with our our teachers at our first professional learning. We do have some opportunities to teach teachers how to build resources in their classroom that are resistant to AI. And so we are building into that professional learning, how can you generate an assignment that you can't use AI just to prompt and post? What questions might you have for our team?
I've got a couple. What you presented appears to be tools for staff to help them better prepare their work.
Right now.
Right now, yes.
Trying to word this. What I don't see here is student work. Is it student work generated by AI? Is it their own work? And that's one thing I'm going to be looking at when we finalize a policy. What what are we doing in regards to student work as opposed to student work?
Yeah, so that was one of the things that we talked about. And so as we evolve, I guess, and look at policies, we felt like we needed the adults to have an information base, if you will, before we developed a policy or a protocol. I will say that when our team discussed that, one of the things we talked about is because it is evolving so quickly, we could certainly develop a protocol that we would use, but maybe stay away from the policy side because we might have to change a policy every month to address it. But with that being said, we do have teachers in the district right now who are using the AI detectors and then having conversations with students and parents about that. I know that some of them particularly have given students an additional opportunity to write that and and that sort of thing. But we're not there yet to have some of those in-depth conversations and develop those policies. And again, I think what what the research that I've looked at and where we're evolving with that is let's let's do a a great job with the task that we assign for students so that maybe it is AI resistant. That's the first thing when we get to that point. But the second thing is, let's embrace that tool so that you use it as a as a teaching tool. That that's, you know, it's more than just, it wrote the paper for me. Okay, so it should be what next? What do you do with that information? So again, that's evolving as we look at the use of it. But but we are having those conversations about students generating basically written assignments essays using AI.
And I might add two elements. One element is generative AI can fit into the journey of learning. And so where can it fit into the journey of learning without taking the place of producing the product? And so as an instructional staff, how can we, as educators, spend more time on the journey, for instance, of writing and less on the final product? Where AI can really benefit as part of that learning process? The second thing, and this is equally important, is that there are protocols that students can use to cite their use of generative AI in work. And so we would lean heavily into that as an expectation, and that's going to be a learning process for both for our teachers as well as our students. It should be embedded in any curricula that engages in generative AI.
12, 14 years ago, cell phones were kind of banned in school, and then we had to figure out how we could use cell phones in schools where we only had so much room for computer labs and classes in computer lab time to use the cellphone in the classroom as a tool as opposed to moving to a computer lab to access internet.
Well, and I was a math teacher, same thing with calculators, same same discussion with calculators. Don't let them use those calculators. When are they going to have a calculator? Well, they have one every day in their pocket.
Understand.
Right. So and again, I want to, I I with what she said, she said it very well. Again, I think it's going to change the way teachers assign tasks for students to do so that they can use that as a tool. And it's pretty powerful to, when it does produce something, and then you have to edit it and and do some work with it after, as far as teaching somebody to write, believe it or not. So again, it's not just what you produced to turn in, it's part of that process. And again, they can cite that. One of the things I really liked when we were doing our research was this notion of, at a very simple level, when a teacher gets ready to to create an assignment or a task for students to do, to really use a simplistic thought process, is this a green light assignment for using AI? Is it a yellow light? I caution you because this, this, this? Or is it a stop? It's a red light? And really using that as their basis for creating tasks for students to do.
And Mr. Pena, I would offer, we're spending a lot more time encouraging students to use the computers that Dare County Schools bought for them than we are encouraging them to use their cell phones.
Absolutely.
You mentioned citing whether they used AI or not. I would like to everybody to consider any work that's turned in by students, that they need to cite how much was used of AI as opposed to their own their own work.
Sure. And that's sort of, again, we're, that's part of that rollout, if you will. And I think it's referenced in this in our work this summer as we work on some of those policies and procedures and what it's really going to look like. But again, I feel like some teachers are familiar with it, maybe our high school English teachers. It's come across their desk probably more than it has somebody in a sixth grade social studies class. So we want to make sure we sort of share that information with teachers and so they understand what it is before we start talking about policies and rules.
And with that, I hear what you're saying, I would like to hopefully maybe have in place either a protocol or a policy in regards to citing a percentage of work
Absolutely.
as opposed to real work, if you will.
Absolutely.
So something for this board and everybody to think about for the beginning of next school year, it's going to be here before we know it, but I think we need to use it, but maybe limit it to some extent also.
Sure, absolutely. And again, that goes back to your red light, green light, yellow light. All right, that might be a yellow. And again, it's going to change the nature of the task assigned, and teachers need to think about that as they're assigning. So they're going to have to change it up a little bit from from that traditional, I think.
So, Mr. Superintendent, with that, I'd like for us to work towards some kind of protocol, policy, maybe for next school year on citing the percentage of work a student turns in in regards to AI as opposed to their own coming out of their own head. I don't know how to say it else.
And so let me say this. We're we're, as a state, and I and I think I tend to agree with you, having been to some professional learning opportunities recently, that Dare County is slightly ahead of the 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 AI ball at this point. People are just trying to figure out what it is at this point. I mean, before establishing policies and regulations about what we can and can't use, I I would wager majority of people our age haven't used it at all and probably are scared to death of it. And so they're avoiding using it. But I I would go even further and say the majority of people that are attending our schools know exactly what it is. And so it it it's it's a tool, and I don't know that we're at a point to establish boundaries and regulations until we have some clue of how it's going to be used in the classroom. And that's sort of what they're talking about right now is educating teachers on what it is. And and then we'll get to the point of developing the procedures of how it's going to be used. But but at this point, it's and and I appreciate the PD we did last week. Go play with it. Just use it. See what it is. See how it works. And I'll tell you this. use it. See what it is, see how it works. And I'll tell you this, when I've used it, I don't necessarily like the way the AI response comes back, in all honesty, because it doesn't sound like me. And so I'll take a paragraph and put it in there and get the AI response, and then I'll go change it so that it sounds like Steve. And because it helps me to develop that product. I'm not, I'm not printing stuff off and handing it to y'all that the computer generated. And that's sort of where we are.
Mr. Bassnight, in the guidance from DPI, they actually have cited documentation from MLA and APA that already has citation guidance for generative AI work, just very similar to if you were citing an encyclopedia source or a primary resource.
And you know how long we've been trying to get kids to do APA? And then going back and saying, how do I do that again? So, you know, and I can see that whether it's World Book Encyclopedia or AI, where did you get the information? That's what we've been trying to teach kids for years. And then how do you tell me how you got that information? And did you put it in the right format? So, you know, I see this becoming a process. I'm not quite sure we're at that point yet, but it makes sense to me that we'd be able to teach somebody how to cite where they got the information from because we do that now.
And can I add that I think the fact that Dare County Schools and with Holly and Denise on top of this is that teaching our teachers and getting them ahead of that curve is gonna, is gonna make this whole process easier. We're, we have to equip the teachers in how to detect it before we can get the kids to stop sneaking around it. So I applaud you guys for doing, getting on top of this and staying ahead of it. And I think it's just something we have to make a priority at this point to make sure our teachers are equipped with what they need to stay on top of it.
And even something as simple as, you know, if you're typing something onto your computer or on your phone, and it adds the next word, that's AI? I mean, so.
I use it, I use it all the time.
Do you choose not to use that word because AI put it in there? Or do you swipe right and move on to that next word? Or, and I'm not going to go to the bottom and say AI gave me that word. It's a tool.
Generating original work by a student as opposed to using a tool to generate it for you. And how much of that tool did you use? You know, education is all about learning and taking what you've learned and producing an original product. And how much of that product is not original? How much of it comes from something that generated for you? It's a great tool. By no means, great work. And we're getting to a point, but I guess some old school education where you have to produce original work.
It is a challenge, like Mr. Bassnight said, if you, for a lot, a lot of people that I talk to, where we encourage them to try it, see, and that's what I did. I didn't know what it was. I mean, it kind of burst onto the scene, probably about March, it popped up on my radar. So I got in there and just started playing around with it. And when it produces something, I read it and I'm like, okay, it gets this going quite a bit. And then it might give me a starting point. So we've got to teach students to let it, it's almost like, I've seen people use it to fact check. You know how we get in there and we Google something and look it up? And then you've got to read all the things. They just put the question in there and then it gives you a response. But you've got to, you know, kind of read that and do something with it.
And you can actually go in there and tell it not to use Wikipedia. I mean, you can specify, use these resources to give me the response.
It's like using encyclopedia when, when we were growing up.
But it does create that written essay that you're referring to. But again, we've got to teach students, I think, to take that because, I mean, that's what I think most adults do. They take that and they're like, gosh, well, that part might be okay, but that doesn't sound like me. I need to edit that. And it's really higher order thinking to be able to do those edits. And so again, I think it's, I think it's really going to change the way teachers make assignments and then what they're looking for when they get back. But they've got to be prepared with that. And Holly said, and I think you put something through the detector.
I did.
That she wrote, and I did too.
I typed a paragraph for a reference for someone, and I put it into a generative AI tool. I typed it by myself. And it told me that it was between 55 and 60% generated by AI. And it was 0% generated by AI. Another story I want to share is there's an elementary, this was in a professional learning that I was in, an elementary school student, the teacher had the students generate a paragraph and then use a generative AI tool to take their paragraph and create an image, like a cartoon character. And so the student put their paragraph into the generative AI tool and they made their character. Well, she was very upset. This was a third or fourth grader because the character did not look like what she had envisioned in her brain. So she, the teacher said, why are you so upset? And she said, well, I need to go back and write my paragraph because that's not how the character should look. The teacher would have never been able to give the student that feedback because the teacher didn't know what was in the child's head. But the child knew that what was generated based on the words that she used did not match the description that she had in her brain. And so she went back to her paragraph and rewrote her paragraph in a more descriptive way so that the generative image tool would give her the character that she wanted. So what that tells me is that it has a possibility, rather than limiting literacy, it actually has an opportunity to enhance literacy and the immediate feedback that we can provide for our students.
I don't think anybody's suggesting going in this blindly and kick the door open and just let, you know, let the avalanche come. I think responsibly, but understanding what it is we're dealing with before we start making rules and limiting, you know, the use and where it is and what it is, figuring out how to use it and establishing our procedures based on the reality, not the fear.
But I would also add that what I feel like Denise and Holly are getting at is that we need to equip our teachers, not only the ability to teach it and understand it, but to monitor it and be responsible and respectful of that. So that, that is, I'm glad to see that that is moving forward and that you guys are on top of that part of it because I think that's going to be the key to the next step. What is what Ron is talking about is setting those parameters and policy on what we're willing to accept and not accept. But educating our teachers is going to be key on this subject. And it is something that's going to constantly evolve because technology is constantly evolving. So again, I think we're on the right track with getting the teachers educated and supported and trying to understand how this works so that we have those strong parameters for our students and how they use it responsibly.
And with your example, where she inputted, the student inputted a paragraph looking for a cartoon character, what I'd like to have seen is have that student draw out their own cartoon character and see how similar or different they were. Because then they created the work and something else did.
Thank you, ladies.
Any other questions?
Thank you. All right. Thanks again for your work. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is unfinished business. And I'll turn that over to Ms. Hitch to present the second reading of proposed policy manual updates.
Sure. I won't go into great detail on these. This is something we've, this is the second reading, so we've been through it once and it's been vetted by the policy committee. And just so the board knows kind of how I did it, we presented, the policy committee got redlined, proposed redlined versions of policies. And then everyone that the policy committee accepted, I went ahead and accepted those. So what you see now as redlined is the, what the policy committee suggested as far as revisions. The, on the first one, let me see, so that's 3225. There were a couple that the policy committee had no edits to. So you had the red line and clean as it originally stood on that. Happy to entertain any questions if anybody has them.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt.
I think, we have got a question.
I think Ron's going.
Rachel, is that on the first one or any one?
So on, on the five that are on for second reading, those were all presented to the policy committee. The policy committee, if they had changes, those changes were made and they were, and so what you have is the current version.
I just need a clarification on one thing, if I could, if that's possible.
Yes, sir.
In 7100, Recruitment and Selection of Personnel, under B, Recruitment, second paragraph, I think that's where I am. Hold on.
Yes, sir.
Hang on. I thought I had it here. Yeah, second paragraph. I'm going to read it and then stop where I want clarification, if I could. All vacancies must be adequately publicized within the school system so that employees will be informed of opportunities for promotion or transfer to new jobs. However, the superintendent or designated may forego publicizing the vacancy if the position will be filled through lateral assignment, which I understand, reassignment, or promotion of a current employee. Promotion of a current employee from, let's say, a lower position to a higher position, would not that be open for publicized for recruitment purposes? Or can the superintendent or a superintendent just go ahead outside of an interim situation?
Okay. So that would be, the board could require if they so chose for those positions to be advertised, this would allow for the filling of that position. If somebody could be promoted to fill that position, you wouldn't have to go out, you wouldn't have to go out and advertise if somebody could be promoted and fill it. So that would be up to the board how they wanted to manage that. The default rule is that you're advertising those vacancies. But this clause that we have here at the end is intended to give the superintendent the opportunity to fill positions either laterally or if there's an exigent circumstance or those kinds of things. But that could be through either a reassignment, someone could be promoted to that position to fill it if that, if that was going to work best for the school district. But if you, it would be up to the board to determine if you want to require this to be advertised. That would be, that's a board discretion.
Any other, any other comments?
I just wanted some clarification. Mr. Bassnight, do you have any comment on that?
Not as I read the policy.
I would say if we, if you start putting, if we start make, look, we hired a superintendent to do their job. And I think if we change that to require that any position have to be advertised, we prevent him from being able to do a job efficiently, effectively to keep the business of running the school going. I think that we, that's very dangerous territory. I think it sends a sign or it sends a message that we don't trust the superintendent to do what's right for the school. And anytime we can promote a current employee to a better position, if that's what they want, I think that we have to give him the ability to do that, I mean, immediately if necessary. So I would not be in favor of changing anything with that paragraph to prevent the superintendent from moving forward in the day to day operations of a school and making sure that people are in place to work.
And we get that notification by our HR team within a 24 hour notice. And you go back and look at it, it's not only just new hires, but it's also for transfers and substitutes.
Was it possibly looking for a change? But just a clarification, the way I read that.
So you happy with a clarification that Ms. Hitch explained to you?
Well, I was going to say, what, what exactly were you looking for me to say? I'm not sure I understood your question.
I guess it's just the language and how I read it might be odd in my head. Promotion of a current employee as opposed to if there's a vacancy, advertise for that vacancy to make sure we have the best candidate. Or that's the only way I'm looking at it, and I don't see it another way.
Well, we always want the best candidate, but there's also some, there are hurdles to advertising a position as well. Obviously, you put it out for advertisement, that's a couple of weeks. Then you've got interviews, that's a couple of weeks. And then if somebody's coming from another district, they may have to give 30 or 60 days. That's two months. And so filling positions, you have to weigh not only how quickly you need to get the position filled, but do you have someone on staff that could adequately fill that position? And I'll tell you exactly what I tell our staff all the time. Anytime we fill a position, our goal is to upgrade the position. And we talk about that constantly. If we feel like we've got somebody in district that allows us that opportunity, then, you know, we want to move in that direction. Some positions, we're going to advertise. I mean, that's, that's just, but, but having the ability to look at the position and look at our current talent pool and all those become factors in deciding whether or not to advertise.
Mr. Payne, this might be helpful if I might interject. For example, if a vacancy comes open and you have an assistant to that position, you may want to advertise that, but you also may just want to move the assistant into that role because that might make sense. So the promotion piece of it, I think that's what that was intended to address. We have, we have positions where we have an assistant to that position. And if we get a vacancy in the actual position and the assistant is a good fit, then it might make sense instead of going out and advertising and going through that whole process, it might make sense then to promote the assistant, just go ahead and promote the assistant to that position.
Yeah, once again, not looking for a change, but just clarifying how it's written because it just kind of caught me kind of odd. And once again, I might be looking at it this way when in reality it should be this. So not looking for a change, just clarification.
Sure. I hope that helps. The assistant, moving an assistant to that position, into that position is a prime example of a promotion scenario where you may not wish to advertise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the policy manual updates as presented.
We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Bothwell.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Payne. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Maryline?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to turn it over to new business, which will be Ms. Hitch again.
Yes, sir. This is first reading. These policies are on for first reading. They've been through the same process. So the policy committee has already looked at these policies once. And those, any amendments that the policy committee asked us to make, we have made, using the same process I gave you on the last ones.
Mr. Chairman, I move we waive the second reading of the proposed policy manual updates and adopt the updates on first reading as presented.
We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Bothwell.
Second. Second by Ms. Balance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Maryline?
Aye. And can I add that this, I know this is not, this is unusual to do this on first read, but because it has been vetted by the policy committee, now moving forward, we're starting with, you know, new policies that are coming up. And it just makes it a lot less confusing. So thank you for, you know, letting us start that process and keep it going smoothly.
Mr. Chair, you need a second vote. So you had one to waive the second reading. Now you need to vote on the actual adoption of the policies.
So now I need a motion on the floor to actually approve, adopt the new policy.
Yes, sir.
Motion, we approve the policy as presented.
Motion by Ms. Balance, second by Ms. Bothwell. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Maryline said aye.
I said aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just as a reminder too, before you move on from me, this is the area where you would talk about, you moved to amend the agenda, but you have not yet had a motion to approve, accept, accept the security grant.
So I need a motion on the floor to accept the security grant that was presented to us tonight. Approved by Mr. Payne, second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Woody. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Maryline said aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hitch.
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is, actually next couple of things is we, we were asking for some board, some board representatives on some, some committees that's outside of our standing board member committees or team players, which that means the chairman of the board could not just appoint someone, we'd have to bring it to the full board to, to have that. So the first one on tonight is the representative that will be representing our board for the Dare County Housing Task Force. Do I have a name on the floor?
I was gonna nominate Ron.
We have a nomination for Mr. Payne.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brower. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Ron. And also with, with that, if you go back and look at the, uh, the information that was presented by Chairman Woodard for this task force, each township had double represent, you know, had two representatives. So by all means, you know, Mr. Payne will be there for the board, but also Mr. Bassnight will appear as well for the side on, on the, on the staffing part for getting the information. So we'll have the same representation, a board member, which will be Mr. Payne and our, our current superintendent.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can make a comment, with, with that task force, any informa, I cannot make a decision like the town mayors can't. They all have to take it back to their boards. So I'm there to gather information to bring it back to this board, to send back to the task force.
Well, thank you.
Uh, next, the Dare Education Foundation has reached out to us as well. They're actually having a new committee as well. It's called, a representative on the Dare Education Foundation Run Hill Ridge Construction slash Expansion Committee. So we'll need a motion on the floor for the person that will be representing the Board of Education with this expansion and Run Hill Ridge Construction Committee.
Matt Brower would like to.
Have a motion by Mr. Payne from Mr. Brower. Second by Ms. Bothwell. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 No opposed, motion carries.
I have a question on that. Didn't they recommend something along the lines of a three-on-three committee? Isn't that what we were supposed to?
We, uh, since Mr. Woody's been out with his work and enjoying his vacation, I'm taught with Ms. Sellers and we're working on that, because that is a, a setting committee. We look back, I think, Ms. Sellers, when it was two thousand nineteen, somewhere in that neighborhood. So I haven't had an opportunity to run that by Mr. Woody.
But that'll be a standing committee.
That will be, that was a standing committee, yes, sir.
Gotcha.
We went, it was just never, uh, went further after two thousand nineteen with, with what we dealt with from that point on. So there was no committee meetings whatsoever, so that was a standing committee, but thanks for asking. Now, I'd like to discuss something that came up sometime back with our previous board about having public comments for Hatters Island. Been talking with, with Holly of this the last couple of days, last week. And we were looking, when we discussed this, and it's what you see on your paperwork, is the Peseant Center. But in the meantime, the recommendation, I think, from Mr. Bassnight and Ms. Holly is looking that we have this public comment at our secondary school in Cape Hatters. And it will be just like we have, we're doing tonight with Ms. Balance. Those who would like to go to the secondary school to sign up would follow the same guidelines that you have here. Fifteen minutes prior to our board meeting, they've signed up. When we do our public comments, Ms. Hitch will then work with Ms. Holly to communicate with someone. So back then, talking with Beth and her staff a few years ago, they were on board and could provide the staff and the technology to make that work. But I just wanted to see what the pleasure of this board would do for having folks on Hatters Island have that capability of going to their secondary school to do public comments instead of planning to drive up here, especially with the weather tonight, possibly in the morning. It makes it a little more difficult for them, so if I can have some comments on that.
I, I, you know what I'm gonna say. With the weather that we've had and the, and, and driving through it at night, if these, if these meetings were in the morning, different story. But sometimes it's not a matter of them not wanting to get here. Sometimes it's a matter of not being able to, especially coming into nor'easter season. So I am, I appreciate the board even considering this. I think we have the technology at this point, obviously, because I'm in another state and I'm participating. So I would, you know, I, I think this is, is definitely a move in the right direction for transparency and communication with everybody in our county that we represent.
Thank you, Ms. Balance, any other discussion?
Commissioners have it, so I think it's simple enough to do.
So I need a motion on the floor.
I'll make that motion to hold, allow for public comment and participation in school board meetings by the residents of Hatters Island.
So we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Balance, second by Ms. Bothwell. Any other discussion?
Can I ask for a clarification? Are we allowing the entire meeting or just for public comment?
Public comment only.
Sounded like Mary Ellen said something different, maybe I misunderstood.
Oh, no, I said, I just said virtually. So I'm just saying yes, by public comment, they can, they don't, they can't participate in the regular meeting anyway, because, but they can see it on the video. They just don't have that. So my motion is to allow them to provide public, during the public comment period, to be able to express themselves with public comment. That's it, and that, and that would be it.
Thank you.
And can I clarify for that? Just so I understand my role in that too. I assume that all of the public comment signup requirements would apply the, in the same way?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's why I wanted to mention that they have fifteen minutes prior to our board meeting, they have to sign up. If no one's there to sign up, the staff member then can immediately let Holly know that no one's in Hatter Secondary School and I'm going home. So.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Balance, second by Ms. Bothwell. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Maryline said aye.
I said aye.
Yep, no opposed, I'm just trying to say that again so we can have it for clarification. Ms. Hitch asked me to, to make sure we do that, so. Here's two things you do, what Ms. Sellers tells you and Ms. Hitch, so.
I would like to.
Sam and Tweedy, I'd like to thank you for taking that and, and arranging that with Holly and making the connections to make sure that that worked through. So I appreciate your work on that.
You're certainly welcome. This concludes our business portion of the meeting, so now I'd like to open the floor to the comments from our board and our student staff. And I'll start with our students first, Ms. Ann.
But, oh, my god.
There you go.
No, it's working. I just wanna say happy Black History Month to the whole community. It's super important to acknowledge that, so I hope everyone has a really great month and can acknowledge all the history behind it and celebrate where we are now with it. I also wanna just reiterate how positive I think that Dare County's approach to AI is, because not every district is viewing it as a good thing or even like something to accept at all. And as uncomfortable and daunting it feels right now, whether we like it or not, it's coming. So I think it's awesome that we're proactively taking that approach. So thank you to Ms. King and Ms. Allen for everything y'all are doing that's really great in the community, so yeah.
I wanna second everything that Anna just said. I think that since technology is growing as really quick, like you said, things that like would be in five years or like two. Like that's just like, like, and you guys are like, sorry, I've been saying like a lot. Sorry, I took public speaking, I'm so sorry. Um, oh my gosh, okay, um, anyways. Um, I just think that it's just really interesting and really exciting that you guys have taken on like that. I'm so sorry, I can't speak today. But I think it's just really cool to hear everything that you guys have been doing for the county, for the schools, because like you guys said, technology's improving a lot. I'm just gonna second everything Anna said. Also, just happy, uh, last week was School Counselors Week. And I just wanna emphasize and like shout out Ms. Carla at Cape Hatters, she does so much. I'm always in the guidance office and I can see how much she does for our school with all the kids, with all the schedules since the semester changed. She had a lot and, and she handled it very well. Love the Bus Week. Love the Bus Week. CTE Appreciation Month is also this month. And DECA is also, at the end of this month, we leave February twenty-eighth and we come back March second. So that is also, since it is CTE related, I want, also I wanna talk about that. Excited for that and thank you.
I just wanna thank you all for your diligent work always. Dare County Schools is always ahead of the game. And then, like Ms. Anna said, in Sherlin, School Counselors Week, we really appreciate all of our counselors. They do work very hard. CTE Appreci, CTE Appreciation, Black History Month, Love the Bus Week, a lot going on, lots of good things. And I'm kind of like Mr. Payne on AI. I wish we could do everything with pen and paper still. But I really appreciate Ms. King and Ms. Allen's work with that, because you're making it more appealing to me and as someone who wants everything on pen and paper, you're starting to change my mind. So I think it has a really, a chance to be a really positive thing for our students. And that's all I have for today. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Brower?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that last month I spoke with George Lurie, who represents the Jewish community of the Outer Banks. And some board members may recall that last April he came and addressed the board. The JCLB sponsors an essay contest every year for area students around the time of Yom HaShel, or the Holocaust Remembrance Day. And I believe that's coming up in May this year. And Mr. Lurie wanted me to share with the board that the JCLB is a good lo, local resource for those who wish to learn more about the Holocaust and about the local Jewish community. And they do have edu, educational materials that can be shared with Dare County Schools. So just wanted to share that with you. I also wanted to say that those of you, most of you are probably aware of the Mustang Music Outreach Program. Sort of like the School of Rock, you know, they teach, teach kids how to play in a band and, and to behave in a professional way and that. And I may have a kid in that. And they're doing their fundraiser, their concert this Sunday from three to six at the Outer Banks Brewing Station. They only do two fundraisers a year, so it's, it's important to them to raise the funds, because they do put instruments in kids' hands that, you know, might not otherwise be able to get the instruments. And that's all I've got.
Ms. Bothwell?
I appreciate all the presentations today, that was very informative and helpful. And I just wanna say that I love our student representatives. I love you guys, you are so great, you share so much and are so enthusiastic, it's a really good thing, thanks.
Mr. Payne?
You'll probably get tired of hearing me after every meeting talking about Dare Guarantee for seniors getting ready to graduate. Please take a look at College of the Albemarle, not only for college opportunity, but for CTE opportunities also. I, I like the word free. That, that's, I like free. So students and parents, please take a look at COA for those opportunities. And also, Mr. Bassnight, I added it up, five hundred and fifty-three course opportunities that were mentioned earlier with grades in the A, B, and C range up in the nineties. Awesome, awesome, thank you.
Mr. Woody?
It did everything, everybody said it, this is a great district and I just wanna give another shout out to the commissioners on the funding for the early college. I'm really excited about that, super excited about that. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. I'm, I'm, that's what I was gonna say, Ms. Balance?
I was gonna say, you can't possibly forget me.
No, ma'am, you're absolutely right.
I might not be there, but I'm definitely there. And I just wanna say, you know, who would have thought that a pen and paper essay could actually become like an extra credit thing? So I think that's kinda where we're headed. But I want to apologize for not being there in person, but I'm, congratulations to myself, because my husband and I just celebrated our twenty-fifth wedding anniversary and that's why I'm not there. So I appreciate your allowing me to, to miss a meeting here. But also a thank you to Ron and to Matt for serving on those two very important committees. I'm excited about the Policy Committee and where we're headed with that. And there's just a lot of great things happening in Dare County Schools right now. And, you know, with the support of our commissioners and an actively working board, we're getting things done. And it's, it's really nice to see, so that's all I got.
Well, thank you, ma'am, Mr. Bassnight?
Thank you, sir. Just a heads up, February twenty-ninth, this is a leap year, so we get an extra day this month. And, and we're gonna plan something in Dare County Schools to, to pro, promote being positive and, and, and have a good attitude on that day. So hopefully across the district, that'll be encouraging, a good day for everyone. And I did want to mention tomorrow as well, we've, we've issued an announcement that tomorrow will be a remote learning day in Dare County Schools. Just so everybody knows, that's, th, those days aren't something we take lightly. It's something we've been looking at and following since last Thursday and, and reviewing it diligently today. Tomorrow is, is a really tough one. The, the weather forecast is going from bad to better to, to bad to worse. And we just don't know, but the big, the catch about tomorrow is not only are we going to be getting wind speeds, depending on where you are in Dare County, from, from thirty to fifty mile an hour gusts, but they're talking about tide and we just don't know when that's gonna happen. The current forecast, we possibly could get to school in the morning with some high winds. But then if the tide were to come in, it would be really difficult to, to get back home safely. And we just aren't willing to risk that. And, and the last thing is this, it is a required workday for our staff, but if any of our staff member has any issues with their safety or, or being able to get to school, we encourage them to reach out to their direct supervisors and work something out with their building principals a, as opposed to, to doing something at the district level, because they're the ones that they're closely tied with. So just thank you and appreciate your understanding about trying to get it right. I'm not a weatherman, Steve Blackstock is, so that's okay.
Well, thank you all so much, I just have a couple little things. First is our committee and our team, thank y'all for the, the work that y'all put in that. I know it's extra hours, but it makes us work as a team much better. Having that resource and having those team players and those committee workers to go in and get that information, have it presented to us a, a week or so prior to this meeting that has, gives us an opportunity to reach out to the lead person of that committee or team or maybe Ms. Hitch, maybe Mr. Bassnight, so they can have the opportunity to do their research from their staff members to present it tonight like we did here tonight. So I just wanna say thank y'all. And second of all is, just past Friday, my wife and I had the pleasure of going and listening to the dual pianos. And I'm gonna be honest with you, Justin, I was really thinking about, I don't know if I'm gonna like this or not. But the Dare Education Foundation done a wonderful job hosting that and was a good fundraiser. There was over, it was sold out, it was two hundred and fifty folks there. I didn't see anyone there not smiling and having a good time. Ms. Bassnight, she was really enjoying herself, had a good time dancing, very good dancing, Ms. Bassnight. Keep up the good work. But no, like I say, Dare Education Foundation does a lot for our schools. And I just wanna do a shout out to them for their work and their grant funds. And now looking, moving forward possibly in a direction of adding on to Run Hill Ridge if everything's work out, so we have more housing for our staff. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Ms. Bothwell, second, second by Mr. Brower. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And no opposed, so we adjourn.